All right, well, I think it's six o'clock. So in accordance with South Carolina Code of laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E, the following have been notified at the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Fort Mill Times, The Herald, The Charlotte Observer, C N two, and W R H I. So welcome, everybody. I apologize that we're kind of coming in hot here. We just came from a very exciting ceremony where we recognized our support staff and teachers of the year. And you will read about it probably tomorrow, but very excited to announce that Nicole Fabe, who is a teacher at Catawba Ridge Public School, has been named our Teacher of the Year. And she received all kinds of goodies, including a free car to drive for a year. So pretty exciting times. I would ask you all, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. I will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all have received a copy of the agenda. Are there any adjustments or corrections? If not, that will stand as approved and stand as consent. I do believe we have public participation. One second. Dr. Travis Sizemore, if you would please come to the, there you are, to the podium. When you get there, you can state your name and address for the record, and then you've got five minutes to address the board.
Five minutes, thank you. Dr. Travis Sizemore, twelve forty-one Klingman Drive, Fort Mill. Is that enough?
Yeah.
Great. I'm going to try to make this as quick as I can because I got here one minute late at the last meeting, apparently before the school year took apart to address this. I've been a practicing physician for twenty years. And it amazes me that we can still pledge this flag wearing what we're wearing. But, you know, I've emailed and called the Fort Mill School District. I have emailed and called the state gov-, the governor McMaster. I've emailed and called the state superintendent. When I first called the board, I was told that it was all these mask mandates, whatnot, were told to us for our kids, by the way, which I'll get to that in just a second, by the state superintendent, by the accelerate task force and whatnot. And I have called every single one and asked for data and evidence to show that this should be the reason we're doing this. And so far, I have gotten nothing. Not that I haven't gotten any calls, not that I haven't gotten any emails from legislators, from everybody else that's called me back and said, well, we just use personal expertise. Well, I, I have to, you know, go back to the data as a physician. And I would, I would implore you that we've had enough of this with the kids. They, the risk of our kids getting anything from this virus, by the way, which has basically gone out, we shouldn't even be having to have this conversation. But the risk of the kids, they have a greater risk of getting in an accident in your car on the way home when you take them home. They have a greater risk of wrecking in the bus on the way home than getting anything severe from this virus. Now, the kids, they have more, more of a chance of getting struck by lightning. How about that? Okay? So we're making our kids walk around. We know from mental health experts that this is affecting our kids. And if you think it's not, if you have kids, I guarantee you know it is. I just got a message before I came over here from my neighbor that said she has a straight A student every year since. Right now, he's got two Cs and he is struggling. And it is not working. So the data does say that we should let them go back to five days a week without, if you want to make masks optional, make them optional for those who are still based in fear. Now, the asymptomatic transmission does not occur. Okay? It's extremely rare. You're all Superman. Dr. Fauci has said so himself, that it does not get spread that way. And board, you are here supposedly, and this is the answer I've gotten when I've asked you before, for the health and safety of our kids. Is that correct? If it is, I think that you'd be knowing more about how about the food that they eat every day? How about the exercise that they're not getting every day? How about we'd be encouraging that? How about mental health and self-improvement for self-esteem for our kids? I don't think health and safety is the reason this was determined. Maybe in the beginning, maybe at the beginning of March when this was such a big deal. But as of right now, it is not. Why has it become that so many parents have taken their kids to private schools? Because the private schools don't make them wear them. The private schools are in school five days a week. Have they had any increases in cases? No. Have they had any increases in other countries where they're going back five days a week? No. So you tell me why we're still doing this to our children. I have two children. I have a senior in high school and I have an eighth grader. The senior in high school comes home every day mad as a hornet because she doesn't get to enjoy it. And I think the principal may Catawba Ridge, I don't know. I can't see faces because who can see anybody? So I would implore you to reconsider your position, to reconsider what you're doing to our kids, to their health. Matter of fact, the masks are actually causing them. Research shows that they wear cloth masks. People, if you don't understand cloth masks, don't do squat for the virus. Don't do squat. So I know we've all been watching the TV and news and that's why we wear them. But I'm there as a physician, as a parent, concerned that our school needs to get back to normal. There's no evidence to support anything other than that. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I forgot, we do have those joining us on live stream, so welcome to you guys as well. We have a couple of reports for information, starting with a ten-year facility needs update. And while it says Jim Britton, I do believe Dr. Epps is going to kind of talk for a little bit first.
And before I talk for a little bit first, I'm going to recognize Dr. Smallsy, who has some recommendations to make, and then we'll jump into the report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Epps. Greater Charlotte Oral and Facial Surgery has been a corporate sponsor with the Fort Mill School District for over two years now. That's our web portal. That's a one-stop shop where all our parents go to register, pay fees for athletics, to look at schedules, look at cancellations. So they've been doing that for over two years. Doctors Marashi and Rassudi.
I'm saying that correctly.
Okay, Rassudi are here representing the practice tonight with the generous donation of first aid kids, their athletic first aid kids, for our middle schools and our high school. Primary the middle schools. As you know, we have a robust training program at the high schools, but middle schools sometimes are left out. So for the safety of our kids, they're providing first aid kits that they'll tell you about. So we thank them for their partnership, and I'm going to let them have a couple of words.
Hi, I'm Dr. Mia Marashi. This is Dr. Jesse Rassudi with Greater Charlotte Oral and Facial Surgery. Thanks for having us. It's our privilege to be able to partner with Fort Mill School District. I've had two children that went through a system, and it's very important to, to us. And it's a privilege to be able to help with this. And in addition, we want to be able to actually introduce maybe B L S to, you know, be able to teach B L S to some of the teachers, faculties, and students, and encourage some of the students to consider careers in healthcare. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. You know, as an, as oral and max facial surgeons, we deal with trauma all the time. And I think having, having resources for school and the, and the students to be able to find proper care quickly. A lot of times, you know, as far as injuries, they're time sensitive. And I think it will make a difference if care is initiated quickly. And we deal with all kinds of trauma. We extensively trained in any aspect of facial trauma, including broken cheekbones, broken jaws, broken nose, broken knocked-out teeth, all that stuff that nobody wants to think about. But unfortunately, that comes with some sport activities. And we just want to, you know, allow the community to know that we're excited to be partners and help any way we can.
Thank you very much.
So their motto is, "We care and it shows." And this is one aspect that they wanted to be part of the community. And I was listening to their talk about finding a tooth and how to place it. As a coach, previous coach, that's happened more times than I can count as a basketball coach. I'm glad as part of this kit. So we're going to deliver those to the schools. Middle schools will get two, high schools will get one, and then they'll refurbish those throughout the year. So we want to thank you for the partnership with us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Before you, is the agenda of the ten-year facility needs update. And I'm going to speak a little bit about that and then lead into Jim Britton and Dr. Smallsy with some comments. If you knew on the board, I, I can't remember if you were on the board last year when we updated the plan, we, the ten-year facilities plan, we don't always update it in an open meeting, but we do update it internally. What it does for us, if you'll think back to the referendum, two referendums ago, two referendum ago, we, the referendum was based on the five-year portion of building needs for two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. Then we, we turn to the plan and it all, it shows basically what you've seen in your information is, it shows enrollment projections and then building capacity. And then when they, when they meet is when we need new schools. So it drives what we include in a referendum and in addition to other, other needs at schools. But that's the primary reason for it. Then the last referendum covered the two nineteen to two thousand twenty-four period, which we built the last two elementaries and the middle school that's under construction now. So now it's, it's time to turn toward, even though it's only two thousand twenty-one, since it takes three years to build schools, it's time to turn toward updating the plan in anticipation of if the numbers were to stay solid, the growth, when we would, when we would need to identify, when we need schools and what, what time, what time, what kind of schools we need. So this plan should cover the two twenty-four to two twenty-nine, five-year period. Now, there's a complicating factor in this, in these sets of, this set of data, as you know. And that's what we're going through now with the, with the enrollment being, being uncertain based on the pandemic. So the numbers we, we bring you tonight are, I think were developed by Dr. Holden before this. So not sure. We're going to go back and revisit the numbers. The whole point of going ahead and sharing this with you, though, is if something breaks in, on the vaccine front, and we do anticipate six hundred and fifty or so kids, we would get a significant portion of those back. So we would be right back where the growth we had projected earlier, earlier would be in place. So at any time, this thing could take off again as far as building needs. So that's why we're, we're doing it tonight. There is some, also, there's the, the whole impact of the new virtual component. We know going forward, we're going to have a virtual academy. We're Marty, is Marty in the room? Yeah. I mean, we're visiting academies, districts now that have them, pre-pandemic, that have them, that do them anyway, just to see exactly what those would look like building needs-wise. Obviously, we need a full classroom. You could build a smaller space to, to hold a virtual classroom. So we've got some ideas going there. But what that does, it knocks off the need for some brick and mortar classrooms. If we have a thousand kids, for example, in our virtual school next year, if everything's back to normal, that would be, that would subtract a thousand out of what you needed on brick and mortar. So it's significant, it's a significant number to have as we plan for schools. In fact, you couldn't make a plan, I don't think, unless you crunched this number in there. And that's a new dynamic that we hadn't had to deal with in the past. So I say all that to say, it's kind of like a pause year. We probably will be talking this time next year about what, what it looked like and, and how the numbers played out. So what you've got in your packets is a couple of scenarios based on, on probably the growth as it was going. And Jim can delve into this a little more. But it's got a option one, which would have probably been our recommendation when we needed the schools, which is sooner than the option two. I'm telling you right now, before we get into this discussion, we would not be recommending the option one based on the uncertainty of what we're going through now. So I think what it, what it allows us to do is sort of like in two thousand and ten when we had the downturn. We were still growing. And it allows, it allowed us, us as a school district to loosen our belt and, which would be a welcome relief to the next rebond and when it, when it would occur and for a lot of reasons. So that's, that's kind of, that's the long and short of it. But I'm going to let these, these two jump in and I'm going to close with some, an exciting idea about a community partnership. But go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Epps. For newer board members, Coming Corporation has been doing a ten-year facility study for almost twenty years for us. And Joe Romic and I, we call it our bible. We use that for all our capital needs projects. So if you ever get asked, you know, when's the roof being done at this school? Or how long is the carpet replacement due for these schools? That's all captured in this mega document. And it's good. I don't know how school districts function without that. So we, we use that as data to long-range plan. Dr. Epps can tell you about the eight percent funds and capital needs that we pull out of that instead of going to the bond for those. But what you're going to see tonight are some numbers. It's always an eye-opener. I hope you don't fast forward through your, through your, your devices to see the numbers. It's always a kind of a neat thing to see where the trend is going, even despite two thousand and eight and kind of what's going on now. But Jim Britton will talk in detail. I'll give you the kind of the overview. Dr. Epps talked about scenarios. That's what we want to point out with the elementary schools, middle school. We have a little bit of time, but we're still cramped, as you know, with Banks Trail and bringing in cottages there, the learning cottages. So we'll talk through that and kind of our plan moving forward. So Jim will take us through it. If you have questions, we'll entertain them at the end.
Thank you, Dr. Smallsy.
I got nowhere to go.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody. I'm pleased to be here this evening and I will, would like this to be as interactive as possible. So if you have questions, please fire away. To both Dr. Epps and Dr. Smallsy's point, this document, this is what we'd call phase one, part one of the long-range facility needs plan. And the word plan is kind of an important word. A lot of districts will do an assessment, but assessment includes options. So once you boil down all the options to decide on it and then put it together, that's the plan. And that's worked very well for the district. This part is the enrollment component. And we identify it so that we can verify that we have enough educational capacity. I guess disregarding the current situation. Historically, you've had to put students in desks. Now it's a little bit different. So it's, it's going to be a little bit strange navigating. You don't have a full year of data to rely upon. So either case, we're going to look at this with bladders on, assuming, giving you the numbers and, and then kind of figure out how to house them or either in person, virtually from there. The second part would involve both Dr. Smallsy and Mr. Romic to kind of lead the charge on deferred current and future maintenance over a ten-year period. So it's, it's really based on life cycle, cost, life, life expectancy. Roof is low twenty years. You might not have to replace it in twenty years, but you should expect to. And so that's on your dashboard. And so if it's close, you can move it out or move it in as needed. So with that, are there any questions? The things we'll talk about tonight, I'm going to show you some graphs, district-wide, both historical and future, in the elementaries, two scenarios that Dr. Smallsy and Dr. Epps are discussing, middle schools, high schools. And then a chart that we've, I thought we've included in the past, but apparently we have it. It's called a flame chart. It's really a, I don't know about that, a quick reference to the snapshot of your campuses. The first shot is, this is a thirty-two-year snapshot of your district. The thing in, the line in red is a twenty-two-year. That's historical absolute information. The purple, blue, and yellow are future projections. I'll talk about that in a minute. From a perspective, I've heard on the news today that it was thirty-one years ago today that Hurricane Hugo hit. So that is, that is that period of time that we're looking at. Twenty years behind us, ten years ahead of us. This represents our, first year that I was involved in the district, there was forty-eight hundred students. And now we currently have seven over seventeen thousand and growing still. Even, I do want to bring out, even in two thousand and eight during the recession, you're still growing about five hundred students a year. It's no flat lines are increasing in this historical data. The next slide is your ten-year projections. The purple represents the cog. Incidentally, I really like to applaud y'all for pursuing two different types of projections. One is, and there's two different methodologies. The cog provides one. And there's kind of based on building programs typically, I mean, building permits and developments typically a little more aggressive. And then Dr. Holden, his is cohort survival. And it's a little less aggressive. And then the blue line represents the average. And that's kind of what we've managed to those, those data points. And historically, it's worked very well for us.
But before you go, just to, to the point you were making about the numbers. So we, we sit right at seventeen thousand a day. And like you said, about six hundred, give or take, have moved, okay, have withdrawn to some other educational means besides, not just virtual academy, but something outside of the district. That's not people that moved or whatever. And so I, I think what you see, especially the Holden numbers, since a lot of our specific plans have been based on Holden, you know, I, I could see it being very reasonable that we would grow another hundred kids by the end of the year, which would put us at seventeen eight, which is, you know, what we've rejected. So not all of them in the facilities right now, but seventeen thousand still on our books.
And to that point, these numbers are year-end numbers.
Right.
And we do not have the ten-day number yet. So we would overlay that just to kind of see where we are and as we move through the year. Typically, don't grow much during the school years.
Right.
Really June to August is when you're really growing. But you do grow some, probably be very easy to grow. The next slide is, is our, what we call a scenario one. And the reason why I showed this, and I think we should show this to you for discussion and then move forward, is that we have been charged with developing a, a plan to have seats available prior to running out of seats. And so scenario one would do this. Now, the cog wheel is dependent on how that works. So I think it's, so in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, you are just at that point. My guess would be it'd be fairly easy for you to manage. There's going to be some students that will exist in the virtual or some other means. So I, I think it would be easy to manage past that date. But I think it's, it's, the reason why we need to show this to you is that if you did choose this way, you would need a funding mechanism in two thousand and twenty-one.
Do we, so quick question. Do we have any mechanism that you've seen from other districts that have had a virtual academy in place for a while? What is the percentage of students based on the overall percentage? Is it like forty percent go towards the virtual?
That's what we're investigating now, Tom. And I think twenty's a little high. They probably basically, Marty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we can't answer right now. That's what we're.
I think that's pretty high, though.
Yeah, I think that's pretty high.
So you're looking at other models that currently have abandoned place prior to this.
Yes, right. See what it looks like. And we, we're getting some good initial information, but I'd, I'd rather gather before we do it. But those of you in the back two rows, so y'all can turn around. There's a chart real close to you if you, if you can't read the numbers. I'm just letting you know at least. That's the one I'm trying to look at, and I can't read them from here. So I'm going to swing my head around a little. Okay.
And Tom makes a good point. The reason why we say you need funding in two thousand and twenty-one is an elementary school takes about thirty-three months to, from design to keys to trees, trees to keys, rather. And the middle school's about thirty-six months. And the high school is a little bigger, forty-eight to fifty months. So those are, those are, we have to be really proactive in managing when you need the facilities. Scenario two stays the same except it pushes it two years, excuse me, one year. I did, I failed to mention, we do show elementary twelve and thirteen coming up at the same time. And the reason why we did that, I think, we've done this in the past, is so that we can maximize the time between re-districting facilities. And in this case, it's a shorter period. So, you know, I think some further discussions, how that, how that is handled. I think part of what Dr. Epps will be talking about later on may even help this situation. The middle school, the need, it aligns well with a funding mechanism of two thousand and twenty-two. You, you don't need the facilities until two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. There is an anomaly with the middle school growth. You'll notice the cog projections typically are more aggressive. They start out that way. But Dr. Holden's ten-year endpoint is, is larger. So I think there's some more study that needs to be done. I think when we go back visiting this, as Dr. Epps has stated, I think we'll be able to shake that out. Either case, the near-term two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six should. And then the high school. This has kind of been out there. I think we'll need to develop some type of educational space within the next fifteen years. My gut is that this virtual world that we're going to, that's going to be the new normal, to some degree, will push that out from the two thousand and twenty-nine, thirty to out. So, but it's, it should be, you know, that needs to be, it's not, it should be on your radar. It's not really discussion, but it's a probability. And this is the document I was talking about earlier. This is what we call flame charts. Green is good. It's ninety percent or less capacity. Yellow is kind of hard to tell, but it's between ninety and hundred percent capacity. And then red's a hundred percent. And that's of the building capacity, not educational capacity. And that's an important distinction, yes. The, if you'll, on the second column, the light blue shows the building capacity. And if you'll look down, for example, Catawba Ridge, that's twenty-four hundred. Catawba Ridge is on the four oh four block. So its actual capacity is, if you want to keep planning periods, unless you want to put teachers on carts, is seventy-five percent of that. So middle school's similar. Elementary is probably a little easier to, to get full capacity. But you'll start feeling full, you know, there's certain, sometimes we're pulling out classrooms for other purposes. I mean, it's not uncommon. But just to, as a quick reference, the only school that really, elementary-wise, that you're going to be safer the next ten years is going to be Orchard Park. Be addressing almost everything else. You'll notice there's two stars, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six at the top. Those represent, just as a quick reference, scenario one and scenario two, when those schools would be needed, the elementaries. And at those point, unless you add any additional education space, you have about ten thousand four hundred seats in the elementary side.
So what, wow, I'm sorry. Would you clarify again? This is school capacity, not program capacity, when you're in reference to the elementary schools?
Building design capacity.
But not program. Okay. Thank you.
And, and, you know, it's actually, you know, these things, some of these schools are, as I believe, that twenty twenty, two thousand and one was the first schools that we were involved in that opened. And there were nine hundred student elementaries, almost twenty years ago. My gut is that the educational capacity for those three, first three elementaries are all different. And, but the building capacity is the same.
So for anybody who's either watching or looking at this, this was the chart that when I was reviewing last night caused me some concern. And, and I, I think it's important to say, we, like we said earlier, the numbers were driven on what we thought a while back. We do not have a school. We do not have a school anywhere close to red at this year, right? Even though it looks like Bank Street was, that says 937. And even if everybody was in person, last update I got was 894, right? So I think, and that's, that's if everybody was in person, which we know that 30% give or take of our students are not. So I think that's the good news, is that the amount of yellow and red that you appear to show on here was all pre-realities of today. And so while it sounds like we don't feel like we need to get terribly excited about starting a building program tomorrow, it looks that way, and it sounds like you're comfortable that that's not the case. And I'm certain of the conversation, what I've seen in the numbers as well.
About when we built the additions for Fort Mill and Nation 4, we built up to 2,500 capacity.
No, the reason it's 24 is, at that time, Dr. Holden's numbers for high school capacity was 72, right? So split it by three.
There's room to expand at Catawba Ridge, right? So that would expand to 2,400, or it's currently sitting at 2,400 capacity?
My opinion, my honest opinion is, Fort Mill High School probably has more than a 2,400 student capacity.
Where it doesn't is in its gyms, cafeteria spaces and that stuff.
I think it's more than that, we're in the number one now, it's more like 27 or 8, you'd go right down to...
The classrooms, it's not common spaces.
Yeah, and Ms. McGarrett, you talked about the building capacity versus program, that's where you really feel it. So when you max out your capacity towards these numbers, as an operator of the building, as your teachers, your APs, your administration, you feel the pain in your cafeteria space, your hallway space. And then any kind of pull-out programs that you have, any kind of special service, you're serving a different population. In that class, you might have five kids, six kids, you don't have 25, that we would normally budget for in capacity. So that's where you feel the calling things.
Well, that's also our challenges with things like auditoriums and, you know, assembly spaces and all that. The bigger they get, the harder it is to do a lot of those things.
Questions or comments or concerns than Dr. Epps has?
I don't like it at all, there's way too much red in there.
Yeah, you're right, it is. Anything else? Okay, just in conclusion, and you can ask questions, but as you know, we talked a little bit about the potential, and I don't think it's in this year's budget because of the, they can't even decide whether they want to pass a budget or not in Columbia. But remember, there were 17 districts, we're one of the 17 that cannot provide four-year-old classes, I mean, other than what the state required. So of the 82 school districts, I think 50-some odd, or 60-some, we're one of the 17, as I said. In the initial budget, the money was in there for us to increase our four-year-old, to include all four-year-olds. And that's going to happen at some point. So if you're looking ahead and you're looking down at the fact that Jim and his numbers indicate two elementaries, we might have some economies of scale there as we go forward. We'll have some decisions to make as a board, it'd be like adding a grade. You know, if you go add four-year-old, you're adding a grade, so...
That's not in any of these numbers, this is all...
That's not any of that. So if you do that, if one of the elementaries indeed is a four-year-old facility, an early childhood facility, then you wouldn't have to add on, you wouldn't have to take space in the regular, the other 11 elementaries. So we like to do the numbers at the time and see what makes more sense. When and if we get to that point, along those lines, the reason I say the kinds of scales, one of the two elementaries could be that building. And it may be that we, we look at the numbers, and because of the virtual, we're able to do, to do an elementary and a four-year-old. I don't know, we need to get to that point and see. But in, along those lines, we're in discussions with Leroy Springs, and I mentioned this to the board in other meetings, about, and we're excited about the potential of partnering with Leroy, the town of Fort Mill, for a facility in the Paradise community. And we were talking about a four-year-old facility there, and that may be what we do. Now, when the discussion has gone into a virtual space, a virtual academy, where we don't know what that looks like, we do some more research, but it's probably a standalone-looking office-type building, because you don't need playgrounds and all, you got teachers that need a big this, you know. So I don't know how many we can get in a building, but Springs would be real interested in serving as the site for that as well. So we've got some excitement going on in that area. There's also an effort to build a gym or a community center from the town, and a group of residents in Paradise are going to do some fundraising. So I just wanted to tell you, going forward, we're, I think you're going to be hearing some things in the next 90 days on their end, and we'll try to work in concert with them. But sort of an arrangement like the Y and the P, you know, where we got all that, put a win-win for the taxpayer and for the community. You know, we need a track for Fort Mill Middle. We're talking with them about, with Leroy, about putting a track, they might put it on the greenway, and they would manage it. We would have it near the school, they would manage it, the community may be able to use it. It's just all kind of synergy there, so that's yet to come. Anything I left out, Tom, we were talking about?
Yeah, I remember about Steel Thunder, but as far as recruiting possibilities?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good one. Well, you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay. There's a housing component to this plan as well. You know where Everly Lakes is? And that's a, not a low-income housing, but that's affordable housing, which is, there's a difference. There's a group that we're going to hook up with and talk about potential housing for teachers. Affordable housing for teachers. We're talking, the price of housing is so high in Fort Mill that it is difficult for teachers and other professions to afford a single, a single person with a first home. So there may be some opportunity there to provide teacher, police officer housing back in that neighborhood. And that excites us. We're talking about recruiting too, Eliza, I mean, I think you could, that'd be a good sell if we're having any difficulty recruiting teachers, so that's...
Yeah, that actually, I know when we talked at our strategic planning meeting, whenever that was, it feels like a very long time ago now, that recruiting and attracting talent, you know, what were some of the obstacles? And that was, that was one of the hot buttons, so that would be very exciting.
And they're working with Jim, and Jim's still in the building. I know you're working with them, and the reason I'm not getting specific is, it's not time to get specific. But the general ideas, and they're working with Jim about requirements from the OSF. If indeed they built a gym first, and a gym at that level doesn't have to be a gym like a high school gym, it can be more like a multipurpose. But if we get that done, they want some services wrapped around that building to serve the community. So this thing has all kind of a potential, I think, which really is exciting. Questions, sorry, I'm gonna hit you with so much, it's all positive.
It's awesome. Excellent, well, you get to keep going. Because that's the future, now let's talk about the present.
Well, another exciting thing, unless you've been under a rock, you may have read today that we have one of our own being promoted to a superintendentcy. Dean Christopher, I don't think he's in the room, but we're excited and want to congratulate Dean on his new appointment. We're trying to keep him here as long as we can, so we're working on seeing how long we can stretch it out. I think they want him by December 1, but we're working on pushing that back, aren't we, Leanne? We're gonna mess with his pay a little bit and make him weary, that's it. But no, seriously, it's just super exciting for him, it's certainly a good opportunity. He's going home, and what a great, great-sized district to begin, and that works, so congratulations to Dean. As far as enrollment update, I sent you some numbers through today, and it's like Christie said, we're hovering around 16,800 or so, or 855, I think, was as of today, as of 2 o'clock today. Again, there's that, as Wayne pointed out, 671 who are out there that, I believe, a good number of those would come back into the fold. If, that's the ones who went to the state charter and are homeschooling. So I think we crawl up, back up into the mid-17,000 range there. So that's, that's kind of, and the problem with running, like Jim said, the 10-day numbers is, you know, if you look at it without those, if you add those kids in that are missing, you're being a little disingenuous because you don't know how many are coming back. But to get a true feel, you got to assume some of those are coming back. So it's real hard to look at a last year, this time versus this year, this time. And I mean, you can speculate, but, so that's why we're not showing that. So take the numbers for what they're worth. I think that this, as we get on end of the year, as we return back face-to-face, these numbers are going to change. And in that regard, let me, before I talk about the plan going forward, let me get some staff members who want to update us on some exciting things that we, in regards to the opening. Leanne, you want to start?
Good evening, I've got a couple of things I wanted to give you a quick update on that we had shared that were in process at the last meeting. We discussed the LEAP days, the state-funded LEAP days. We paid those extra five days to our elementary and middle school staff last Friday, September 18. I believe I had shared with you that our initial state allocation was 3.5 million. The actual payroll run for those days was 2.2 million. After inquiring with some of my colleagues in surrounding districts, every district's actual amount was less. So we all are anticipating there's going to be some unallocated state revenue that hopefully we'll see later in a subsequent allocation. Because it appears the state had put a higher amount aside for the LEAP days than it really costs the districts.
Well, and Leanne, I didn't, I didn't watch the Senate today, so I don't know if they talked about it, but Molly, along with the LEAP days, came in, I'll call it under budget, for the summer school and stuff as well.
Which I had shared with you before, that I know for us, as well as talking to my colleagues, everyone came in under, because we were so late being able to plan, because the state was so late in giving us an amount, that districts could not expand their programs that quickly. We did not receive those allocations till the very end of June, and the summer programs were starting the next week. So every district was in the same scenario with that as well. So I think right now, the state is just, you know, it's a constant turnover with allocation, what actually got spent, what's unallocated. Now they're debating how they're spending some of these unallocated funds. So it'll be interesting to watch that. But we did pay our staff for the five LEAP days. The second thing I had mentioned to you was, we had put in an application on some, it's called Medicaid Provider Relief Funds, for the decrease in billing that occurred during the spring closure. We did receive a check for $11,235 since our last meeting. We will take it gladly. Also, I have not gotten any news back on, I've shared with you that we did apply for the FEMA grant for some of the COVID-related expenses. Have not heard anything on that, but I expect that's going to go kind of at a very slow, slow pace on those grant funds. We did, interestingly enough, we have received now a second survey request from the state procurement office. They have basically sent a survey, we had to do a quick reply by the end of last week, and have said they have funds that they will allocate towards additional PPE, and asked the districts, they will pay for it this time, they said that upfront, and asked us to provide what needs we have. So we have a very long list of things that we submitted, but a couple I wanted to share with you because you have asked questions about it. We did request the tri-fold death shields for the middle and high schools. So we did submit a request for 6,700 of those death shields for the secondary schools. We also did a lot of additional student masks, gloves, wipes, hand sanitizer, all the things that we're already starting to see on some of the cleaning supplies, the schools requesting additional. We have, you had approved an allocation of $1 million at the end of June for COVID-related expenditures. We have spent or committed about $925,000 of that. So I am very hopeful that the state is going to come back with providing some of this additional cleaning. We'd be thrilled if they did the death shields. Also, interestingly enough, you've probably seen that with the state COVID relief funds, that's now gone to conference committee, because the House and Senate can't agree on how that's going to work. I actually received a text from Representative Ray Felder this afternoon, and she asked, have we gotten any funding? I said no. Subsequently, she texted me and said, oh, it's in conference committee. And hopefully, we will hear something on that, how that's going to work. I said, we have spent, you know, 850 to a million dollars, because some of the things we've spent, like the death shields, I don't think that's really what the state's considering PPE. I'm not really sure what the criteria is going to be on this fund. But I shared with her that what we had spent, and that we would certainly be very grateful for any help with that, because I see that we're going to continue to have requests from the schools for additional cleaning for this school year.
Leanne, on the tri-fold death shields, that's not the same as what we put at the elementary?
It is not.
I assume they're more expensive?
They are more expensive, they're taller, wider, for the secondary level.
But at some point, we have a source of funds, we could consider doing, again, a taller version if we needed to. I would assume we could consider doing something more economical like what we did at the elementary?
I don't think so, because I think the way this is going to work from the survey, the state would buy the, the state has already negotiated a contract on these with a vendor, and I believe they would buy them and just ship these supplies to us. I don't think this would be actual dollars coming to us to spend. I think it'll be handled differently, based on what, this is kind of how the survey was worded.
But if they say no, and we decide we need them?
Correct.
We could still go our own route like we did before and not be as costly?
We could, and I think there's so many pieces about the PPE and COVID funding right now from these different sources. I think we will just have to see what ends up coming in to us, because if we receive some reimbursement on what we spent out of our million dollars, we could have some available funding to do the tri-fold shields out of that pot that we were reimbursed from our local money. Does that make sense? So I think we'll just continue to see, hopefully, this will all be completed at the state level soon. We'll kind of know if we're getting supplies, we're getting money, how we're going to be able to handle it.
Now, these, the tri-fold, I know that, you know, we had gone through in elementary, but are you seeing a trend, though, with them putting them in middle school and high schools?
We're getting, we have gotten a lot of requests, and we have provided them for some of the front offices for middle and high, like the guidance areas specifically, where they requested those, and we have purchased a very small amount, but just for those particular uses at the secondary level.
Yeah, because I'm just curious if it's, you know, if we're seeing it in other districts, I guess there's a commonality across the board of them using it?
We've seen some districts who did provide, Charleston's coming to mind, who provided it across the board. But with the state, with this survey, we sort of felt like they're asking what our needs could be, they have money, they're going to provide it. We're going to request what we think we could use.
The other thing I would say is, if part of the Genesis 4, needing them more at the elementary, was something, I guess we're going to talk about it a little bit, whether they stay AVE for five days. When you have five days, you have more kids, right? And so that's separation.
I'm just curious as far as, you know, if I can, you know, we're talking middle school and high school now, so I'm just wondering, you know, from the fund allocation, if the need is there, I, again, I understand, absolutely, but if there's a way that that funds come in and we can allocate it in a way that better serves us, I mean, that's...
And we'll certainly have that discussion. We just initially wanted to make sure we were completing the survey based on the item. They had specific items listed with vendors, and it was almost a pulldown box of, do you want to select this item? How many would you be able to use? And we responded. So we will see, and hopefully quickly know what they're going to send us. And then we'll come back to you or... And then we'll come back to you or share our recommendations with you.
They gave a limited choice of what.
They did. They gave a limited choice of what they would cover. Yes, of course.
Naturally.
Naturally. Then the last update I wanted to give you is related to student nutrition. At the last meeting, I shared with you that they had offered a grant or reimbursement to assist districts for costs incurred between the March and June closures. Because we, all districts, continue to pay cafeteria staff during those months. And so the state had provided an application for a grant reimbursement. It was, our submission was about like this, we had to send every single invoice for every single food purchase by school during that period. It was quite, you know, a, a job to do that, but we did. But I'm very excited to tell you, we received a check for $47,507. So we were, we were pleased with that, you know, for our efforts to do that. And that will certainly help with possibly any decreases in meal participation this year. But already, since we announced last week, the USDA free meal program now through December or until the funds run out. Tammy Welch shared with me that the first drive-through delivery or pickup that we did two Wednesdays ago, which is for 100% virtual students or A B students. So A B students would receive meals for the days they're not in attendance face to face. We did 1,832 meals. Last Wednesday, it was the second drive-up, we did 6,116 meals. She's expecting even more tomorrow. They did a huge food order for delivery in preparation for this week. So we will be curious to see how many meals get delivered tomorrow. But that's great that these families are taking advantage of that program. Also, I wanna close with, the State Department reached out to Tammy and asked her if she, I said, well, were you, were you asked to volunteer or were you voluntold? She said, I was kinda voluntold, to do a video about our student nutrition operations during COVID and how we're handling things right now. And Joe Burke worked with Tammy on the video and submitted it. And I saw some email correspondence and the USDA representative, she said, this is great. She said, the food from Fort Mill looks terrific and she said they did a great job with the video and we'd like, it's like a three-minute video, we'd like to share it with you tonight so you can see what student nutrition's been doing.
Hi, my name is Tammy Welch and I'm the Director of Student Nutrition for the Fort Mill School District in South Carolina. I wanted to give you some insight into how the USDA free meals has positively impacted our students, our community, and our staff. It has opened the door to feed more students. We were hopeful that our meal numbers would increase after the USDA provided the waivers for free meals, but we had never imagined that this program would more than triple our participation. This has been a great way to reach more students who may have been afraid or embarrassed to eat school meals and now all are free. For our students, it has provided help to families who have had financial hardships. Our meal numbers continue to grow and this has provided an opportunity to show students who never ate with us before that school lunch is tasty as well as nutritious. For our staff, it has greatly reduced the amount of time spent on paperwork and allowed our staff to become more creative. From celebrating birthdays in the classroom with cafeteria-prepared yogurt sundaes to adding characters to our grab-and-go meals, which builds excitement in the classroom around mealtime with students trying to figure out what character or positive message will our students see today. It has also provided stronger connections between our staff and school staff, knowing that we are all in this together. It has really put a spotlight on our cafeteria and all the hard work that goes into serving our students. During the pandemic, we had so many firsts and our cafeterias rose to the occasion to feed our students in new and different ways. Our community has shown great appreciation for this. And now with the free meals to all, many more families are being exposed to the healthy meals we provide. This is a recent email I received from a first-time customer. "Hi, Mrs. Welch, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team. It was a smooth process today from our experience, our first time. Also, I must say that the food is such a blessing to our family right now, not only financially, but also as we juggle other logistical challenges at home too. This program is such a huge help and having the menu and allergen information is very informative. Thank you so much. Thank you to your team, USDA, and the Fort Mill School District." Students have shown love to our cafeterias by making cards and our booster clubs and vendors have made donations to our program, giving our staff hope and support, just what they need to help them get through these difficult times. The free meals program is bringing awareness that food insecurity exists within our community. Donations have increased to assist with paying off student meal debt and community partnerships to fight hunger and food waste have strengthened. The USDA waiver's purpose was to provide meals to all students. We are accomplishing that and now we will reach more students who need this assistance. The waivers have also provided so much more. All the positive community comments about the free meals has brought an increase in strength to our staff. The free meals has given our students and community a renewed sense of hope. Full bellies, full hearts, strong minds for all. Our mission, feeding the future.
That's awesome. And I, I hear great things in the community about, about the program and I, I think, we forget that we have a lot of families, especially in this time, that can benefit from some of these opportunities. That's fantastic.
We've had a lot of feedback about the off days, the independent learning for the virtual, ranging from way too much work to not enough, like they need, students need help. So I'm gonna let Brian Spittle talk about an exciting program that was, we sent home the information today to the parents still would help assist in that effort.
Yes, that's right. So we sent a communication to every parent and teacher today about the partnership with the South Carolina State Library, providing tutor.com free to all students in South Carolina. And that is available through the DISCIS program. And so what we have done to make that easy for students is today we pushed out the DISCIS link through ClassLink to each student's launchpad. And from within that, it's a few clicks away. And what tutor.com can do is provide live help to a student in math, reading, science, social studies, foreign language, and that is available without creating an account on the site. And if you choose to, you can create an account and get some additional services like submit your papers for review and that sort of thing. So we think that'll be a great resource for students to take advantage of on their days at home when they need help with the problem or have a question.
So when you say live help, they, they can actually give somebody like a tutor almost?
Yeah, like a tutor, yeah. So I, I asked my, my student to test this out for me. And I went home at lunch and I said, hey, what are you, what are you doing? And she was on there with a tutor doing geometry problems. And, and they can either do a voice, you know, communication or chat. She was doing chat on side, working out problems.
Did he do video?
Oh, it's live, so they're like, you know, the problems on screen, you can, pretty neat? All right? Any questions about that?
Okay, any other staff that I said I was gonna recognize and I failed to do so? Have anything to update? Okay, going forward, based on what we planned to do in the, when we, when the board approved or when we, when the administration was in the plan and move forward in the, this summer, we will begin, based on the favorable numbers of school and district, numbers related to the virus and based on the low counts in York County, we're gonna go ahead and implement the plan as we previously announced to go face to face with our elementary beginning this coming Monday. So we're on go on that.
Come on, come on, elementary, Eric. Big comes up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, everybody to make it that work.
I can't hear you good, but okay. Y'all leave you something nice.
Yeah, I said, yeah, it's very nice.
Okay, good. And as far as, as, as middle school and high school's concerned, it is our goal to get those, those two areas back face to face as soon as we can. As we said earlier in the year, when we, when we announced the plan, we would evaluate it every grading period. So we do plan to look at the, at the, and I think it's the end of October, first of November is that, so we'll be looking at that in the next two to three weeks in anticipation of whatever we do there. There are some challenges, I'll go ahead and just tell you that, that with starting, particularly high school and even middle school, and it's, it's in scheduling, I think the curriculum people can speak to it better than I can. And, but let us go back and, and develop a plan and let's, let's, before you have a lot of questions tonight, which I don't know that we're really prepared to answer, but let us go back and see what, what exactly we'll need to do to, to pull that off. But we're excited and all, we, we'll be based on the numbers as, as we go through the process. If there's a spike going forward after going full bore with elementary, then we'll have to, you know, we'll, we'll do, we'll do what we, and, and we're in, we're in consultation with DHEC and cameras, our COVID, COVID, our person coordinator, COVID coordinator. So it's not a decision that we'll just be, somebody will be making off in the room by himself. It'll be a lot of, it won't just be me making a decision, be a lot of input and a lot of people involved. So we're excited, we feel good about the start so far. It's gone extremely well, but we're looking forward to getting the elementary back and eventually getting everybody back.
Can I ask you two questions that I don't think are things that you can't answer?
Thank you.
On the, so on the elementary, you know, we, you said it back in, I don't know when that meeting was, July, August, whenever, but I, I'm hoping, I'm assuming, I don't like to assume, I'm hoping that there is a, a strong communication plan for parents to remember that as of Monday, it doesn't matter if you're A or B, you need to be in school if you're an elementary kid and every day and, and bus routes will be, you know, coming every day and you should get on it every day and all that kind of stuff. There's, I, I trust a, a good plan for that? Just give me the thumbs up. Yep, all right? And on the, on the middle and high, to your point, you know, no, no question about challenges, a lot more kids, changing classes, that's part of the reason I was asking about the death shields because again, we, if we double the number of kids in a classroom, that, that would be helpful and that kind of stuff. But what I think I heard you say is, is, you know, we're, we're starting to get a fair number of, of requests, how soon, how soon can we consider it? You know, what I, what I heard you say is it is still the goal to do it as soon as reasonably possible. And you're not gonna commit to a date today, but you're working on what would that plan look like, what would it take? And maybe in our next meeting we can talk more about it.
That's, that's, that's a good, too. As I said, there are some, some challenges that, I don't know, you'd have to, you'd have to be explained, we'd have to get a little more depth as far as scheduling, particularly at the middle and high level. There were, when we built the virtual program, there were some, there were some issues with how many kids are each, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll pitch it all out for you. It's not just as easy as hooking it and doing it.
I just wanted to hear you say for sure that it was a goal to, to do it as quickly as reasonably possible.
I would bet my car that by, for second semester, we'll be back full bore for everybody in January, but I hate to bet my car, so I'm hoping.
You don't, you don't drive a fancy, I mean, a Charger, right?
Reliable though, that's reliable car, that's reliable car. Do wanted to say thank you to the administration, to everybody out there working hard on this plan. I can't imagine the amount of work that's gone into it and as I have, and I've heard other families go through it and we're experiencing it in my household, my, I've always had a tremendous respect for educators and teachers. My respect has only increased because I do not have the skills obviously that our amazing teachers here in Fort Mill have. So thank you very much. I'm very encouraged to hear you say that we're gonna be able to meet that goal of getting back in the original plan at elementary. So that's very exciting. But we're doing it safely. I'm, I'm glad and would commend the district for the COVID dashboard. I, I think that's a tremendous tool and especially in making sure that the community can understand what is actually going on. And that data is so much better than any data I've seen out there regarding the extent of the virus in our community. And so I'm very encouraged by that as well. Very encourage you to talk about the goal of getting high school and middle school back and getting it back safely. So thank you.
Yeah, excellent. I wanna second that too. Phenomenal work by the district and the teachers. I do have a quick question on the, as far as the buses go. I know if they do go five days, you know, as they're moving forward, five days a week has a Monday. How is that gonna look from, from a bus load perspective? Cause I know we were.
You better leave a good word with armor there. Tommy, what you?
Yeah, basically it's, it's, they do clean, the seating capacity won't change. We've been, we've been keeping it.
That's sixty.
Capacity is 67%.
Sixty-seven, yeah.
We might have to pick up a couple extra loads and Tom's already hashed that out, so we'll be fine.
Okay.
But, but when we double, it's on the same day, they have A and B kids, but we had factored that in already, so there's, there's room within the capacity for the A and B to all be on the same bus at the same time?
And those that didn't, we added, we added a bus for that route.
Okay.
It'll take some adjusting, we might have more kids than, than anticipated. We still have some car riders that might choose to be bus riders, for example. So we'll have to, it'll be like the start of the school year, of course, when it comes to transportation.
And we said what, 30 days that they, that they, if they didn't sign up to be a bus rider, we needed 30 days and we're coming up on about that time, I assume?
Yes, and, and, but again, we're not gonna leave a kid at a bus stop or something. We'll, we'll pick up every kid there, it just might take longer, those first couple days.
Right, thanks, Tommy.
The only question or piece I guess I would like to, to add is we, we keep talking about grading periods and I know you all know it, but I'll just remind us that high schools' grading periods are six weeks and middle school is nine weeks. So I would hope to see, hope, I'm, I'm over the optimist for this concern that we will be able to get them in their grading periods, so to speak, than similar versus.
Well, we're, we're talking in general every nine weeks, but I say, I hear you, you know, we'll, we'll, we're gonna look at the, at the lab and look at the rates and we'll see. What's, what's come of the plan? Not sure what it, it may, it may be partial support teachers, I don't know, we just gotta get in here and see exactly what it looks like when you fold everything back together at the middle and high. But I think we, we got a good idea of the elementary.
Well, I think that's because that's been our focus all along. So now we're switching gears a little bit, the others, the others hopefully are a little more capable in self-sufficient, too, so that helps.
Yeah, I think we, we were just talking, I was looking at my notes about the, the stuff Brian just shared, the, some of the learning. I also have seen some, some pretty exciting things for those, cause again, I think middle school is probably where some families are feeling the challenge or, or strain of, of, you know, depending on the parent situation and their ability to help them be home. You know, I know that there's, there's a couple of different programs that have pivoted and are offering that, that off day, Greenway is doing something, I think Loon's got something. I know there's a, a study hall program that a bunch of churches are pulling together. So knowing that that doesn't switch on Monday like elementary does, I'm, I'm glad that there's some of these other programs for, for folks that might need some additional assistance.
And we did talk with, we were speaking about how quick could they pivot with the D, we, emergency came up, we had to go to A B or we had to go, and they're pretty nimble on their feet, which will help the teacher situation on the A B and parents too.
I got, I got just one more, and it's not anything that you covered, but I was just curious, have we been, and how have we been doing as far as overall attendance tracking? You know, just as far as students, I, I know we, my understanding is for middle and high on a B day, well, and even, even for elementary right now on a B day, that the, you get credit for the day as long as you do the work. I don't know really how virtual, I assume it's a, it's a visual, you know, on a. I don't know really how virtual, I assume it's a visual, you know, on a virtual, but I hope that we're getting good attendance, I guess, is really what I'm, I would love to know, that we feel good about students actually getting the instruction by late.
We talked about that today, Leanne.
Yeah, we're actually, we're working pretty diligently on that. This week, Brian's team, Power School, they're meeting individually. We met with the high schools this morning, middle schools tomorrow, elementary's on Friday, and talking to them about this exact point. Their recommendation and Gray, Young, and myself, we're going to go out and meet with some of the faculty, specifically at the high school, and talk about this because I know that it somewhat goes against how a teacher feels about it. And we're used to recording attendance based on chair time on school day. And it's really now shifted to more of a work-based approach. And the state has even directed districts to give the benefit to the students and count them if they're virtual or they're on their off day from their A B schedule, to count them in attendance. And then they would have five days subsequent to complete the work and turn it in. So we are, based on questions that all the schools are getting from teachers, we're trying to make sure we get kind of that direction out because obviously I've gotten involved now because of the funding. And so I'm trying to kind of share and make sure like our Power School staff can help me get that word out to the schools. And also at our principal's meeting last week, I mentioned how important it is that, you know, we're all consistently taking that approach to maintain our attendance levels or our recorded attendance or funding from. But we're working to get that further clarified for our teachers.
Understandably, from the financial side, I just want to make sure that whether they're virtual or A and B, that they're getting everything that they shouldn't be getting in a hundred and eighty days worth of a school year, right? And that we're not letting folks fall through the cracks of really not getting about a half time. You know, I mean, I know they're not with any teacher, but they, we need to make sure that they get a hundred and eighty days worth of educational opportunity.
Right, and from what I heard from the high school, Power School group today is that their teachers are following up with those students promptly if they do not see them live beyond that day. That they're following up with them. So we're having a lot of discussions about that.
Other questions? We have a really short agenda, we have no executive session. And so if y'all don't have any other questions, I'm going to look around one more time. Is there anything else we're supposed to talk about? Is there anything else we're supposed to talk about? I can't believe that seven thirteen, we're done, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All those that are going to adjourn, say aye. Goodbye, we're adjourned.